Out of your busy schedules, we have a thin audience tonight. So I think we're going to be moving fairly quickly through our agenda tonight. Before we get started here, our rules for speaking. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to open the list of participants and click the raise hand icon by their name virtually. When recognized by the chair, address comments to the chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. Please cancel the raise hand icon after you speak. Presentations must be kept to 10 minutes. The chat box can also be used to ask simple questions. Board members are required to keep their video active during the board meeting. The board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues noted on the agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Board actions such as draft resolutions and outgoing letters will be posted for the public on our Google Drive. Okay, we're going to go ahead and do a roll call right now. And Kay Cooney Aguard.
Here.
Rodney A Wong. Charmaine Duran.
Here.
Guy Inaway.
Here.
Brendan Lee. Dion Mesta.
Here.
Junior Miazano. Dan Smith.
Here.
Nate. Dr. Gucci. Tony Valesco.
Here.
And myself, Larry Veray. Hundred percent. Thank you all for taking time and we're going to move on. Honolulu. Can you hear us now? Okay, HFD. Ready for your report. Thank you.
Hello, I am firefighter Justin Bumanga with the Honolulu Fire Department. Per the information previously requested, the Honolulu Fire Department provides mutual aid and incident management support upon request. In consultation with the County of Maui's Department of Fire and Public Safety, the Honolulu Fire Department deployed 40 personnel consisting of firefighters, incident management team members and search and rescue specialists to assist with the ongoing operations. With the assistance of the Hawaii Air National Guard and Hawaiian Airlines, HFD personnel, equipment and supplies were transported to Maui. The Honolulu Fire Department will continue to support the Maui Fire Department and its community during this difficult period. For stats for September 2023, in regards to fires, there are zero structure fires, four wildland brush fires, four nuisance fires, which include rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle, zero cooking fires and four activated alarms which had no fires. For emergencies, there are 118 medicals, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, six motor vehicle crash slash collisions, four mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues and two hazardous material incidents. And finally, going on to our fire safety tips and announcements. Our fire safety tip for the month is a fire prevention month. The National Fire Protections Association sponsors Fire Prevention Week, which is observed from October 8th to the 14th, 2023. As the national campaign is promoted throughout the month of October, this year's theme is cooking safety, starting with you. Pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? Unattended cooking is the leading cause of cooking fires and deaths. What can you do? The good news is you can prevent most cooking fires and burns. Help keep your family safer with these simple but effective tips. One, turn pot handles towards the back of the stove. Two, always keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Three, watch what you heat. Set a timer to remind you that you are cooking. And four, have a kid and pet free zone of at least three feet around the stove and areas where hot food or drink is prepared or carried. That'll be it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for a very thorough report. Great advice for the community and hopefully they'll heed that. Board members, any questions for HFD? Community? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Hey, moving on. HPD, are you online?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Okay, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Sergeant Clint Ege with the Honolulu Police Department. In regards to the statistics, crime statistics for the month of September 2023, there were five motor vehicle thefts reported as compared to seven in August. There was one burglary report reported as compared to six in August. There were 33 theft reports reported in September as compared to 20 in August and seven unauthorized entry into motor vehicle cases reported as compared to 15 last month. In regards to total calls for service, we responded to 5,840 calls of calls for service in the month of September as compared to 6,280 calls for service in the month of August. And just to note, our statistics under the theft category include but are not necessarily limited to pickpockets, purse snatchings, shoplifting, theft of the vehicle accessories, namely catalytic converters, theft of bicycles, thefts from buildings and thefts from coin machines. That's about all I have.
Okay, thank you for the updates. Board members, any questions for HPD?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Okay. This weekend, I complained to the chair because I got up to watch the meteor shower at, you know, 2:30 a.m. with my son for a school project. But I could hear racing on, I think it was the freeway, all the way from Palisades. And I wanted to know if you could find out if there were any complaints or if perhaps that racing was going on somewhere else. It sounded like the freeway.
Yes, yes, ma'am. You're absolutely correct. We get, we get numerous calls for service, particularly on the weekends in regards to races on the freeway. The normal, the normal call for service would entail something to the effect of there are, you know, 50 or 60 cars on the road, two cars blocking up the road to make way for speeding. So our chief actually set out a special project to all the, to all eight districts islandwide in regards to speeding on the freeways. We have our traffic division and our solo bike division out on the weekends as well as our patrol officers responding to any calls for service. And we're basically addressing that racing on the highways with a zero tolerance policy, meaning we're arresting people for racing, we're arresting people for excessive speeding, issuing citations for average speeding, average speeding violations. And that will continue probably for the foreseeable future. But yeah, I, I do, I, I live in Pearl City too. So I hear, I hear the races on the freeway and it's pretty irritating. So we're doing what we can to address it. I don't know about the other districts, but here in District Three during the weekends, we can, we average at least one or two racing arrests a week on the weekends. In addition to where citations are issued, but yeah.
Thank you for focusing on it. We really appreciate it, especially as the holidays roll in.
Absolutely, absolutely. No problem. You're welcome.
Yes, Sergeant, thank you so much for providing us update on the racing. It does, it continues every weekend and we're very lucky that there hasn't been a major fatality out of it. Okay, board members, any other questions for HPD? Hey, go ahead.
Sergeant Ege, we have residents who are wondering who needs to be talked to with regard to budget for appropriate staffing for the district. We've talked a few times at meetings about having, I believe the number is 13 officers on duty at any one time for the beats happening in Pearl City. And I mean, the district is huge. And so I think the concern is if we don't have enough officers, is it a recruiting thing? Is it a budget thing? What are the challenges facing the police department in Pearl City?
I can't speak for every other district, but in my experience, I think it comes down to budgeting. In regards to changing that budget, it's probably well out of the police department's hands. It's something that I believe would have to come from the city. You're, you're correct in that our minimum staffing nightly is 13. We've requested on several occasions to at least up the staffing during the weekend hours, weekend, the weekend work shifts, particularly Friday night and Saturday night. But I haven't heard of any kind of changes forthcoming. We are lucky that we do have a lot of hardworking officers that are working with what we have.
Great, thank you.
All right, Sergeant, thank you. Any other questions for HPD from the board? Seeing none? Okay, Sergeant, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to public testimony, community concerns, any complaints? Does anybody have anything they want to bring up to the Pearl City neighborhood board? Hey, I guess we handled that all the last board meeting. Jayden, Jayden, welcome. You got it.
Chair Veray, Vice Chair Duran, members of the board. So great to see everybody back again. Just had a few couple of things that I wanted to follow up on that I didn't get the chance to do so when I was a board member. One of those things is actually holding Hart accountable to the 2022 recovery plan. And in the meeting that we had in June, it was Hart's narrative that ridership would increase as a result of deferring the park and ride and increasing the bus routes. And I see on the agenda that you're planning on amending the bus routes. I mean, that's great progress in that direction. And two, I would also challenge the board to hold the council accountable when selecting the new salary commissioner. Now that I believe David Hayakawa stepped down from his position on the salary commission, the previous nomination, the previous nomination had a pre-existing seed in her mind that the raises were going to be inevitable for the commission, for the, for the city council. So I urge that the board really hold the board, really hold the city council accountable when they deliberate for the new salary commissioner. Thank you.
Hey, Jayden, thank you. Thank you for your input and Charmaine and I will be remembering what you said. And thank you for tuning into our board meeting because I know it's late back there. All right, any other, any other questions, issues anybody want to bring up? Mr. Vena. We can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm muted.
We got you. I know, somebody else.
Can you hear me now, Larry?
Okay, I got you Cruz.
Good. On the public testimony on the last meeting, item number one was traffic issues that concerned, that could occur on Kamai Maui. It should be new dry dock, not dry lock. Can you look at that? Item four, public testimony.
Yeah, what was that last you just said? So I just pulled up my minutes so I could look. What was that correction you wanted?
Traffic issues that could occur on Kamai Maui with the construction of a new dry dock, not dry lock.
Dry dock. Okay, well, when we get ready to vote, we'll make that amendment.
And I'd like to include that, thank you very much, Larry, for the letter you sent me on the request for a dock park. We should go with it. That's a very good letter. Thank you very much for that.
So you know the surprise I got for you Cruz? We may name that dog park after you.
Thank you.
So we'll talk about that in a few minutes coming up. But thanks, thanks for submitting that and being your patience too. Any other items to bring up? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move into presentations. I don't know if our speakers are here, but we'll find out. Last month, we were supposed to have Ms. Nani Beretto. She was going to talk about community wildfire preparedness. She's done a lot for Hawaii Kai for their board. Nani, are you online? Nani is not online, so we'll push her to next month. Okay, we also had last month, Mr. Mike Ewall, he wanted to talk about H Power and how burning waste is harming our health and environment. And he asked if he could get on agenda so he could do his full PowerPoint presentation. Mike, Mike Ewall, are you online?
I'm online, yes.
Okay, Mike, turn it over to you. You got 10 minutes or less.
Okay, great. I'll jump right into it then. Let me get the screen share going.
Chair, this is Melody Aduhua. Would you like me to give an introduction or shall we just jump right into it?
I would say we just jump into it because he gave an introduction when he came for his three minutes last month.
Okay, very well. Thank you, Chair.
All right, so aloha and mahalo for having me back. I'm going to go through a number of things quickly because there are a lot of things I learned since last month, both on Oahu and Hawaii, I'm counting, that relate to things in your area. So let's see how much I can get through and then happy to see you today. I must be at time. So initially, we were talking about unresolved last month. Now there's been a proliferation of proposed resolutions that other neighborhood boards and other groups have that they want to bring forward that relate to the same topics. So I'll come back to a copy of this slide at the end, but just to give you a little preview of it. Some are for state action and a lot of them are for county. Now this here is just a sky view I took on the flight in of Campbell Industrial Park. A lot of the facilities we're talking about are here or near here on the Y and I coast. And here's an overview of the ones above the green line are the existing facilities. Although on the first one, I highlighted that there's a new proposal that we just learned about being much more serious than we realized. That is a plan to recycle so-called the ash from the H Power incinerator. And then below the green line are a number of companies that we know are proposing to build things on the islands, a lot of which we expect would target the same area, particularly the Campbell Industrial Park. Now, I probably don't need to tell anyone where the landfills are, but you've got the two landfills in the Y and I coast. This one is the one where the ash from the H Power incinerator goes. And this is a close up of it. And this is where they've been looking for where to replace that landfill. Initially, last year, they were looking at these non-shaded areas or the white or grayish areas that were the only ones that were available after screening out everything else. But they ended up choosing not to go after those because they're above aquifers. And they're now looking more at the gray areas, which are military lands, federal government lands to see if those are suitable. And they have about another year now because they got a two-year extension to pick where they want to put the new landfill. And then you've got the second landfill that's still operating, which is where your construction and demolition waste goes. These are your demolished buildings. And that's also on the Y and I coast in Mount Akuli and also running out of space. The other one's not quite running out of space, but there have been political promises to close it by 2028, which are not likely met at this point. And I've also learned in meeting with the ironworkers and others that the federal government has documented that around that second landfill, the construction and demolition waste one, which also has coal ash from the coal plant that's now closed, the average lifespan is 10 years shorter than the state average for those living within a mile of it. So there are criteria that we drew up that are how to have a landfill that it's not as dangerous to live next to and something that we might want to have a resolution around, particularly to figure out ways to get communities not divided and conquered against each other, but be able to innovate around these principles that would be helpful to any community that ends up with it. Now, particularly around the incinerator, it's called H Power. It's owned by the county. It's operated though by Cavanta, the largest waste and incinerating company in the country. And it's the third largest in the nation. It can burn up to 3,000 tons per day, but it's actually only burning just under 60% of its capacity in the most recent year. Now there are two older burners there that turn 34 next month. And they're missing half of the pollution control devices that most incinerators have. They have no controls for the nitrogen oxide that trigger asthma attacks and no controls for the most toxic chemicals like mercury and dioxins. The third burner, which is only 10 years old, still does not meet modern requirements for nitrogen oxides, even though it does have the controls for them. It would be illegal to build and operate any of these three burners today. Now they're one of the largest air polluters in the county. These are just the latest numbers available from the EPA on how much they're putting out. You can see for a lot of these polluters, they're ranked one, three or four in the county next to some of the other power plants. And the trend is that these types of facilities are going away. Most of them are aging out, falling apart, catching fire, getting too expensive or people are organizing to get them closed down. In some cases, county governments are working to phase them out or eliminate them. So we're down to 66 left in the country. And the average age of those that have closed, there are 50 of them that closed in the past 23 years now. And their average age when they closed was 24. So to have one that's about to be 34, it doesn't make sense to expect it's going to last many more years. However, your county waste manager seems to think that there are 20 more years of life left in the two older burners, which is not, does not seem realistic. It doesn't match what we've seen around the country. Now, we also know that they're dirtier than coal power plants. These are the latest numbers that we've crunched from EPA showing how they compare to coal burning. If they were producing the same amount of energy, they are much more polluting on most of the major air pollutants and other state agencies like the State Environmental Agency in New York have documented the same thing. And there's a narrative that you hear from companies like Cavanta and governments like your county that own incinerators that basically justifies having this kind of facility by saying, well, we have continuous monitors. We know it's coming out of the smoke stack. The state will regulate this very hard, so we won't go over the limits. And the limits mean that it's healthy and safe. And every part of that is misleading. I don't intend to debunk each part, but welcome to jump to other slides in the Q and A if you want to dive into it. But the main point of this part is just to point out the lack of continuous monitoring. If we regulated motorists on our roads the same way we regulate smoke stacks from those chemicals, we will let people drive around with no speedometer all year. And then once a year on the highway, there will be speed trap set and there'll be warning signs saying, warning, slow down, speed trap ahead. And the brother of the driver would be running the speed trap because the company hires their own consultants. So we know that the technology exists to monitor more than just a few pollutants real time as they currently do. And that when they do use real time monitoring, they find that the actual emissions are much higher than what we're led to believe. In one case, we found 80% higher. In the case, the most toxic chemicals like dioxin studies from Europe found 30 to almost 1,300 times higher than what we find when they test for just six hours a year. So the technology exists to do a lot more and we're trying to put that into law. So one of the resolutions is to have the state pass a bill similar to one that we just got passed in Oregon, where instead of just continuously monitoring a handful of pollutants, like you see in green, this is in the first of the colorful columns. That's what they have to continuously monitor H Power's incinerator in the Campbell Industrial Park. The yellow are the ones that they test just once a year and the red not at all. The bill that is likely to be introduced this coming year by Representative Lowen would switch into the green column where all those chemicals have to be continuously monitored and the data put on a website real time for the world to see. Now another issue, another actual threat that's coming up is with incinerator ash. For every 100 tons of trash burned, there are about 30 tons of toxic ash that are produced. And that ash is much more dangerous in a landfill than just trash, even though it takes up less space because it's fine particles. They can blow off of trucks on the way to the landfill. It can blow up to the top of the landfill when they use it as daily cover material. And the reason why I have coffee beans shown here is that when you pour water over coffee beans, you're not going to get coffee, right? But if you grind them up and increase the surface area, now you can have access to what's inside and you can make coffee. It's the same principle with ash versus trash in a landfill. Rainwater going through it will pick up a lot more things, will decent into groundwater, but also make it more inhaleable and drinkable if it blows off into any place that people are exposed. Now, one of the big dangers here is that your county, we just learned, is trying to do what Cavanta, the company that operates the incinerator, has done in my home county in Pennsylvania, which is to try to recycle that ash, as they call it. And this is just photos from Cavanta's website. They talk about the facility in Pennsylvania, but the same exact thing is what they're trying to do in your area. And that is they want to take this ash and instead of dump it in the landfill, which is a much more responsible thing to do than try to make roads out of it. That's what they want to do. Essentially have linear landfills that have no liners where workers are working with it, where people are driving over it, where fine particles can blow into the community and there's no protection for the groundwater under these stretched out landfills that are now just going to be called roads, but will be the same toxic material exposing more people. And this is currently in development by the county. They still need state permits and no one really knows about it. So there's been no organized opposition to it yet, but that's why I'm bringing it up so you can be aware of it. Now, there are studies showing that incinerators are worse than landfills. And it's not really one versus the other. It's landfills versus both because with an incinerator, you need a landfill unless you're going to do something far less responsible and try to build roads with it. Or you can have zero waste systems and minimize the landfill and make it more stable. In Delaware County, Pennsylvania, not far from where I am, there's the largest incinerator in the country, also run by Cavanta. And that company, that county rather, is working to move away from incineration with a zero waste plan. Part of that, that plan involved doing a lifecycle assessment. And it documented here that burning trash in the incinerator is far more dangerous than going straight to a landfill, which is the smallest of these three bars. You can see the blue is the global warming impacts where incineration is far more dangerous. The brown is the heart attacks and strokes associated with the particulate matter from the incinerator. The red is the toxic chemicals.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, can you, can you summarize so we can, we'll have a couple of questions for you because 10 minutes is up.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll skip the rest of this one then. So there's some more recent study that's come out for Hawaii County that documents the same thing. Basically, for recyclables, that's best to recycle them, bad to a landfill, but far worse to incinerate. This is just the chart from that study. Bring me back to it if you want me to walk you through it. By looking at burning the big island recyclables in H Power on your island. There's also talk in Hawaii County about taking their trash. And this is just from a study from this, or a scope of what I shortened last month in the presentation. They're talking about barging their trash to your county to burn and maybe bring the ash back to the big island. So this is something being considered and something that we like to see guarded against. And I'll skip over this one, just this last set of slides is just talking about how we're trying to get a state bill that would make trash and tree burning ineligible be considered renewable energy under the state's renewable energy mandate. And this currently looks like this, but we want to strike that definition so that when the utilities have to meet that obligation, they have to try a little harder and do it without that biomass definition, which represents the incinerators that they have. So they have to do more wind than solar instead. So I'll leave it here on what some of the resolutions are that are being considered by other neighborhood boards, by other advocacy groups that we'd like to bring to you for consideration and just open up for questions.
Okay, great. So one question for you before I turn it over to the board members. Have you given this presentation to other neighborhood boards on island?
I've given earlier versions. You're getting the benefit of a lot of knowledge that we gained in the past few weeks. So no one's had this version of this presentation. There's a lot of newer stuff in here. But yes, I've met with and spoke to and gave a much more detailed presentation to the Makakiro Kapale, Honolulu Neighborhood Board as well as the, the Y and I Neighborhood Board, as well as also it was the Computer Council on Y and I as well.
Okay, well, good. Okay. Okay, well, good. Okay, I just wanted to find out where your outreach was. If you could make sure that I get this presentation, I'll send it out to the board members and then we can still collaborate uh, in the out days. Board members, any questions for Mike? Charmaine, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, so I don't see. Okay, so I don't see on the list. Um, one, I don't know if this is just an FYI. Or if there's an, you had an action that you wanted us to take other than this list that came from other people. But I don't see on this list anything where the city has multiple sustainable plans. And the most recent plan, I think, says closing H power, we understand is important, but right now that's not feasible. Um, and I'm kind of ad libbing because I remember reading it. Um. It might be useful to include actually trying to get the city. To change their policies for H power. I'm pretty sure we're still paying for the last, the third broiler. Um, but there is a sustainable plan and that might be a good focus point. Maybe the most important focus point is get the city to shift gears at some point.
Yeah, that would be great. And I'd love to see where it says that in the sustainability plan. Um, I, I believe you, but I haven't seen that yet. Um, I also know from talking to the Solid Waste Director for your county just a couple of weeks ago that that is not his plan. That his plan is once this incinerator eventually is too old to keep operating, is to build a new one and keep doing the same thing. Um, he made that very clear to me. Um, and he also thinks it's going to last much longer than I think is reasonable to expect.
All right.
Okay, any other questions from board?
I got one. Hey, Mike, um, so it's always, I suppose, easier to be the one pointing out the problems, but we're also looking for solutions. I was at a party this weekend and I met a guy from Malaysia and basically he said that. Uh, with the exception of the green waste bins that we have. We do collection for recyclables, but we don't actually do any recycling. Um. And because we don't have, I guess, plants to process and make the plastic pellets and everything. Having the next step, so not just the, the wagging of the finger, but what the actual solution that we can do. Uh, here on island or if it all needs to be barged away, but. We separate and collect, but we don't actually finish the cycle of recycling, which would be reusing said plastics that are put in the blue bins. So do you have anything to say about that?
Um, plenty is just a matter of time, how much time there is. I could do a whole presentation just on zero waste solutions. Um, but the best one here is to have the county come up with a zero waste plan and not have them make it up, but have them hire certified zero waste experts and consultants. Who know how to do a proper plan because your county is so addicted to and it, um, basically a, a party with. An incinerator that it's going to likely go down the track of pretending that zero waste and incineration are compatible, which they're actually, zero waste is defined to procure incineration. Um, it's, it's totally incompatible, especially because you have. The contract that says you have to give them a certain amount of waste or pay them anyway. So you can't reduce waste without getting punished for it, which is already happening in the county for years. Um, there are a lot of things that can be done to make the material more marketable, to make it usable um, in the state and also to, to ship it off where. Uh, where necessary and to reduce reuse and really get at the source of lava. So we're not trying to deal with plastics recycling, but we get lava, it's just out of the economy in the first place.
Okay, we'll circle back. Thank you.
Right, board members, any other questions? Community? Okay, seeing none. Mike, thank you so much for presentation and uh, you and I will be corresponding. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to board business. Uh, Vice Chair, you want to talk about uh, the twenty twenty-four legislative priorities?
Okay, um, thank you, Chair. And I'm going to request that it's deferred because it is a blank resolution. But the idea um, behind at least making a list of items we think at this moment are a priority enables members of this board to um. Can you hear me?
Got you real loud. The neighborhood hears you.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, it's right here. We gotta just turn it down a little bit.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Keep talking, you're good. We got you.
Okay, um, enables members of the board to officially track and submit testimony, I think um, one year, maybe last year. I can't remember exactly. Um, members of the board, myself, um, Trevor Ray and others submitted over thirty. Um, individual testimonies to track and lobby for things that we thought were important for Pearl City and the state of Hawaii, not just our district. Um, so if you have any CIPs, state policies, anything, um, this is. Putting it on a list will empower us to track it over the years as well because some of these things take a long time to get done. Um, with that said, I move to defer.
Okay, if there are no other objections, we'll go ahead and defer. Everybody agree? Okay. And then uh, what I want to say also is uh, board members be thinking out of the box, things that we need to, to work on. Because uh, things are going to start kicking up in the legislature in February. We need to be proactive. Have things all ready for our senators, representatives and the city council. Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, uh, the second item on agenda is a resolution that I've been drafting. Uh, to go to the uh, Hawaii Department of Transportation. Uh, to, to Director Sniffin. It has to do with the U-turns on Cam Highway that we desperately need to be legal. Because right now we've got thousands of people making U-turns on Cam Highway and uh, and uh. H dot considers it unsafe. So if there are no objections, I'm going to defer this. Resolution because I'm working with Casey Abi right now for that negotiation. Because I think there is, there's some light at the end of the tunnel. If there are no objections, we'll go ahead and move to the next item. Uh, announcement for committees. Um. We don't have it, the post, but I'll say right here, for our Legislative and Capital Improvements Committee, uh, Charmaine Duran is going to be the chair. And her members are going to be on Dion Mesta, Brendan Lee, and I'll, and I'll be backing up as an ex officio. Uh, Development Planning and Zoning, thank you, Brendan. You're going to be chair. Uh, for that committee and your, your members are Dion Mesta, Rodney A Wong, Charmaine and myself. Uh, Public Safety and Crime Prevention Committee, Rodney. Uh, A Wong, you got that as chair and your, and your right hand guy is going to be Junior and myself to back it up. Traffic Transportation, I couldn't get anybody to take that on, so I took it on. And I'll have uh, uh, members will be Dan Smith, Rodney A Wong, Guy Anoy, Kay Cooney. And I'll probably reach out to the public because Cruz Vina has always been uh, instrumental with some ideas. Uh, probably bring him on. Health Education Welfare, Dan Smith, you're the chair. Uh, with Charmaine, uh, Tony and myself. Uh, Recognition of Achievers Committee, uh, Tony Velasco, you're chair of that committee with Charmaine and myself backing it up. And lastly, for the committees, Parks and Recreation Committee will be Tony Velasco. Members Dan Smith, Nate, uh, Takaguchi and myself. And then uh, as just as a review from last meeting, OMPO. Uh, myself and Vice Chair Duran will be attending those meetings. And then when the Pearl Harbor Restoration Advisory Board stands up again, Guy will be prepared to attend those meetings. Uh, any questions on any of that? Okay, if there are no objections, uh, be approved. All right, moving on to. Uh. Letters. Okay, uh, uh, Guy Anoy, in a way, had mentioned uh, the crosswalk that's on Wymano Home Road. It's very close to Monoloe Road as a safety issue. Uh, there's been a number of times that we addressed that we wanted this removed. When we had the Complete Streets meeting back in twenty eighteen, that was, it was also brought up during that time. So Guy, just let you know, I've been on the phone with Complete Streets staff today. They are trying to give me answers to when is. When are they going to be able to remove the crosswalk and then safely install a new crosswalk? With the lights at Wymano Home Road. The concern right now is if we move forward and, and uh, remove that crosswalk. We're going to have our children that go to the park, they're still going to want to cross the street. Because they're not going to cross the bridge, go to Noalani Street where it's safe, and then cross back that way. So. We're, we're going to try to do this right. So if there's no objections from our board and, and with Guy, we're going to defer this one. And uh, hopefully next meeting I'll have answers and because I've asked them, I want to know when, when they're going to make that uh, change. Okay, and uh, moving on uh, to uh, Pearl City Neighborhood Board Letter. It's going to go out to the Director of Transportation Services requesting a slight modification of the city bus routes fifty-four, five thirty-one, five thirty-two. To accommodate our students of Pearl City High School. And Dan, you were instrumental bringing that issue up. Uh, we drafted the letter. It's ready to go and all I need now is board approval. Uh, should I, should I just? Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm going to go ahead through the names and if you guys all agree for that letter to go out for the change of the bus routes, uh, uh, Cooney?
Aye.
Hey, Rodney? Charmaine?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Brendan? Hey. Hey, Dion?
Aye.
Junior? Dan?
Aye, and thank you Chair for your work on that.
Hey, Nate? Tony?
Aye.
Okay, myself, aye. So the motion passes uh, with uh. An abstention. Okay, thank you. We'll get that letter out. Okay, the, the next letter. Uh, has to do with uh, the concern. Chair, yes. Oh, I forgot. I forgot to make the motion, sorry. I'm moving fast here. Wait, do I have a motion? Okay, just break. Hey, second? Okay, any discussion? So we'll stand with the vote. We're good. Okay, sorry about that. Uh, let's see. Here, moving on to uh, a very important one that uh, Board Member Lee brought up. Uh, last month and we want to make sure that we got it in writing. It has to do with the, the safety issue. At the uh, H one merge split. In Aia Halava area. Those of you know that as you head on H one from Pearl City to Aia. And you're getting to the far right lane to make that H one uh, curve. To get, to move forward to the Red Hill area. It's a very dangerous merge. We've, we've had lives lost at that location. Every day, it's all near miss accidents with people that, that, the vehicles are traveling at sixty-five miles an hour. And all of a sudden they got to go to a rough twenty-five because the, everybody wants to get into, jam into that lane. So uh. So Brendan, thank you for the input for that letter. I've drafted it up. And what I want to do is can I get a motion to approve sending that letter to the uh, Director at Sniffin?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Say, second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
I actually have a question.
Yes.
Do we know if um, this project is on the STIP or. Oahu Regional Plan or, because it's kind of a bigger project. Do we know? Does anybody have an idea? It could be. There's a lot of these projects on there. I'm just trying to figure out if we need to um, lobby to move it up or add it or anything like that. Does somebody know perhaps from those?
Well, that expert could be online. Casey Abi, are you online?
Yes, I am, Chair. I'm online, but I'm not sure. I would have to go check that out, but um. I mean, it won't hurt to write a letter to the director and the director, if there is a project, they will respond. In a letter, written letter, saying that there is a project and from there you, the, the, the board can uh, work with um, the DOT on ensuring that the project moves forward. Uh, next year is a particular year where we will be um, looking at our STIP, a new STIP uh, process. So the board member who's on the OMPO Advisory Committee, that's a very important opportunity. For the board member to express their concerns if the project's on the STIP. If it's not, then that's the opportunity for you folks to. Express your interest in having a project put on the STIP. But a letter will help. So you know, explain it, you're expressing your concern to our director.
All right, Casey, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure. Uh, but Senator Elafonte has already reached out to the director about this issue. So if it was on a plan, I'm guessing that the director would have referred that information, relayed that information to our senator, would have included it in his email back to me. So given that that hasn't happened, I don't believe it's on any.
Okay, uh, and uh, so right now, I, I believe we should still move the letter forward. The other thing is that uh, Brendan, you offered a solution that would help out and I agree with that. It makes sense to extend that shoulder lane further. Uh, westbound to give plenty of room for people to merge into that lane. So, so right now I want to go, uh, if there are no other discussion, I want to go roll call vote. Hey, Cooney?
Aye.
Hey, Rodney? Charmaine?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Hey, Brendan? Hey, Dion?
Aye.
Junior? Daniel? Nate? Tony?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Unanimous. Thank you. Passes. Okay, the, the next letter, uh, Mr. Cruz Vina had provided testimony uh, at two to three meetings. Uh, recommending that Pearl City really needs a dog park for residents. Uh, I have also had a number of people approach me and, and of course Cruz made some recommendations which I agree with. Uh, with Blaisdale Park as an opportunity and Wild District Park. Uh, so. I've got drafted up a letter to the Director for Parks and Recreation, Ms. Thalen. Uh, I think this is a, this is really doable thing. And I really think from the military aspect. I've, I've, in the letter, I've got a photo of Makalapa Officer Housing with their dog park, which is a good model. And I really think that if, if the parks can put up the fence, our residents can help design and build their own dog park. Uh, we just got to make sure that we tie it down if we put it Blaisdale Park because the homeless will use it for their shelters. All right, so uh, can I get a motion to approve to send the letter out to Ms. Thalen? Hey, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Guy. Uh, do we uh, have any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote? Cooney? Rodney? Charmaine?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Brendan? Dion?
Aye.
Junior? Dan? Nate? Tony?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Unanimous. Motion passes. Okay, we'll get that letter out. Uh, moving on to uh, NCO survey, the Neighborhood Boards. Vice Chair, you want to talk about that?
Sure, um, over the last year or so, many neighborhood boards have adopted resolutions or letters asking the neighborhood. Commission Office to take certain steps, um, including amending the plan. And I think the survey, the survey that the Neighborhood Commission is trying to do is um, a step in that direction. They had a meeting yesterday. The survey or the request for feedback on what should be asked in the survey, I think, hasn't gone out yet. But when that does go out, I'm sure the Chair will circulate it. Um, and everybody, if you have an issue. That you would like the Neighborhood Commission to ask other members throughout this whole island about. Please uh, be sure to respond to that request for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, moving on, uh, the last item I have for board business, I have a proposal. Uh, I'm planning on facilitating a Pearl City Neighborhood Board Town Hall Meeting for all the families, members and also uh, uh, requesting. Our officials, uh, the DCCA and others uh, to attend this meeting with all the families that have their loved ones. Buried and interned at Sunset Memorial Park Cemetery. And recently Senator Wakai has come up with a creative idea. Possibly to uh, uh, integrate solar technology to the cemetery to help uh. Bring in some funds and make it attractive to maybe somebody to take over the cemetery. So we're going to bring everybody together. I've already started uh, reaching out to families. This will be on uh, Thursday. I think it's, I think it's a Thursday, sixteen November. Uh. It's a evening. It'll start at uh, six thirty and it'll be for about an hour, hour and a half. It'll start at, uh, six-thirty and it'll be for about an hour, hour and a half. Uh, are there any objections to me hosting this Town Hall Meeting? Okay? Seeing none? All right. And I'll put out more info as, as I work with the Senator. All right, we're moving on to government officials. Uh, did, uh, our Mayor's Representative? There we are, right there. Sorry, sir. All right. Mr. Urbano?
Check. Good evening. Chair and Neighborhood Board. Highlights of the Mayor's Newsletter. Mayor stands on enforcing public welfare laws. The ACLU lawsuit seeks to prohibit the city from enforcing public welfare laws and take away the city's ability to enforce laws that protect and safeguard the public. The city disagrees with the ACLU lawsuit. Homelessness is a very complex and pressing issue that affects us all. So the Mayor wants to assure everyone that the city is committed to addressing the issue with compassion and empathy and will focus on finding long-term solutions. Safe and Sound WAKI initiative marks its first year. On September fifth, Mayor Rick joined Prosecutor Attorney Steve Ohm, Council Chair Tommy Waters, and various other community law enforcement leaders to celebrate the anniversary of the initiative. A trio of affordable housing updates. September was a busy month. Comes to city plans to help facilitate the creation of new affordable housing units. Here are some of the projects we've been working on. Parkway Village in Kapalei, Iha'api Place in Pailua, and Hawa'i Wa'olu in Chinatown. Safety tips to Fire Prevention Week. As HFE mentioned, this is Fire Prevention Week. While fire season is year-round, however, in Hawaii, drought continues. We have increased the threat of fires across our island home. Visit, visit HFE's Instagram and Facebook pages for tips on fire prevention. Oahu's parking meters gets upgraded all across Oahu. The city's credit card-friendly on-street parking meters have been upgraded to better serve public. These four G connected parking meters were modernized to allow users to pay for parking safely, securely, and quickly. And by the end of the year, many of the point only meters will be upgraded to the new systems as well. Lastly, uh, this Saturday at eight AM, the city is hosting with other government agencies the Pearl Harbor Bike Path Trail Cleanup. Uh, this is an annual cleanup that is very important to, uh, the city. So if you are available this weekend, we are cleaning up the bike path with much of, uh, the trash along that very critical path for the community. Thank you. I am responding now to some of the questions that, uh, was asked, uh, bus routes again. So I know the letter will be going out to DTS. They do have a response, uh, regarding to ridership for the period January to June twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three. Average ridership per weekday for Route fifty-four was approximately thirteen hundred passenger trips. And for Route seventy-three, it was approximately two-hundred-and-thirty passenger trips. When the Bus Integration Service began on July first, there were no changes to Route fifty-four alignment and Route seventy-three was restructured to the three routes, five thirty-one, five thirty-two, and five thirty-five. For the period July to September twenty-twenty-three, average ridership per weekday for Route fifty-four remained constant at approximately thirteen hundred passenger trips. While the combined average ridership per weekday for the new three routes were almost double of former Route seventy-three at approximately four-hundred-and-fifty passenger trips. Average ridership per weekday per route is approximately a hundred-and-fifty passenger trips for Route five thirty-one, a hundred-and-eighty passenger trips for Route five thirty-two, and a hundred-and-twenty passenger trips for Route five thirty-five. As reported, it is, at this point deemed not appropriate to extend current bus service further up closer to Pearl City High School due to its out-of-the-way location from adjacent residential community and limited connectivity to the city roadway network. Again, this is a response to DTS, from DTS. Uh, I just wanna say, don't shoot the messenger necessarily. We're here to try and advocate for a amenable solution moving forward. And with the, uh, letter going out, I'm sure DTS will respond accordingly.
And Director Urbano, we have no problem attending in-person meetings.
No worries. Pearl City Fire Station. HFE has identified a property which is owned by Trinity United Methodist Church at the corner of Humomai Drive and Wa'ama'ua Home Rowne as a viable option to relocate Pearl City Fire Station. The HFE is working closely with Departments of Designing, Construction, and Land Management to acquire the property. The next step is to include conducting property infrastructure capacities, environmental site assessments, followed by land subdivision and execution of purchase-sale agreement. The estimated completion date to acquire the land is June of twenty-twenty-five. DDC's Land Division is assisting DLM in procurement of the land and the new fire station. HFE should report on the procurement of land as DDC is not the lead in the process. DDC's Facilities Division can work after HFE procures the property. Last is about the dog parks. And so, yeah, don't shoot the messenger. The Department does not have plans currently to build dog parks in the Pearl City area at this time. Administration manages its capital improvement budget based not only on funding, but by priority, backlog list of improvements, and staff levels needed to work on each project. When projects are added to the budget such as this one, they are considered in context of all other projects filed worldwide and placed accordingly on the lengthy list of improvements, uh, they'd like to complete. Uh, currently, there are dark dog parks located at, at Seening Central Oahu, Wanaloa Community Park, and the Lani Street. That is what I report.
All right, Director Urbano, thank you much, and, uh,
No worries. No, any questions?
And we will, this is a very creative Board. We'll find a way to make this happen soon. Sure. All right.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sure there's some, uh, questions coming in.
Yes, Board Members, any questions for our Director?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, well, the usual, uh, the usual comment is, I think that, um, on the, on the buses, that, uh, when you receive the letter, um,
Well, when DTS receives the letter.
That, that, um, you know, there are, there are some solutions. Uh, it's not necessarily all or nothing. And that, um, in, in the city, city will be, you know, by, by expanding the routes can, uh, you know, generate more, more ridership. So, and, and so I would hurt some flexibility. And of course, um, changing topics, uh, swimming pool hours, still, we still need some, uh, evening and weekend hours at the, uh, Pearl City Rec Center pools for people who work nine to five. So please pass that along to the, uh, to the Mayor for his reelection campaign. Thank you.
I believe you, uh, mentioned that a couple of, uh, meetings ago, they're running extension of, uh, the hours or pools usage. I believe again, it's limited to workforce, just not having the resources.
But I, I had circulated the, uh, recruitment, uh, letter, um, flyer to, for example, uh, West Oahu Student Employment Office and to Leeward's, uh, Student Employee Office. And it hadn't been posted there, so I would encourage a little more, uh, again, uh, aggressive, uh, recruitment, but also there are limitations on the hours that they're, they are restricted. The, the lifeguard you have are now restricted. You're only willing to pay them nineteen hours a week, meaning you don't have to pay benefits. So that, that's one of the reasons why you're short on people. Thank you.
Hey, thanks. Brendan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Um, with regards to the, um, new fire station, is HFE acquiring the entire property? Or are they just purchasing the, uh, portion that Port of Water Supply is currently using as a base site?
It sounds as if they're gonna acquire the entire parcel. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
That's a surprise. I'm gonna look into this. Uh, Board Members, virtual. Guy?
I, uh, in regards to the, um, traffic lights situation, you know, on the, um, intersection of Ho'olalea and Wanaloa Highway. So coming down Ho'olalea, approaching Wanaloa Highway, that light has been drastically cut short. So now maybe, um, tops in the morning rush hour, um, between, I guess, uh, six-fifty to seven-thirty, I would say, maximum, um, maybe, uh, seven or eight cars can go through. So the traffic gets backed up all the way, um, a good several hundred yards up. Once upon a time, you know, um, at least about, uh, fifteen cars can go through. Fifteen to as many as even twenty at, at times, you know, from, uh, the traffic is flowing well. But now, seriously, like five or six cars can go and that's it, it'll turn red. So, um, that causes a problem with, uh, Pearl Highlands area because, uh, that entire street gets, gets backed up tremendously. And, um, you know, a lot of, um, students are crossing, et cetera, like that. So it's, it's, it's really a bad situation. So if you can adjust the traffic lights again?
Yep, I will certainly pass this on to DTS. But my, uh, being an engineer myself, uh, I believe when it comes to traffic engineering, they do try to queue it prior to getting to a highway. And therefore you don't have a queue, uh, at the highway. So it might cut sense that they're trying to queue it prior to getting into the heavy traffic of the highway. But that's what I believe. But I will again pass it on to DTS.
Well, with that, you saying, uh, you as an engineer, you know, just do the, uh, regular. I know since not common, but you know, when six cars only can go through on, uh, Ho'olalea coming down, that, that's, that's pretty sad. As an engineer.
You don't, you don't want thirty being stuck on the highway. So you're trying to time vehicles in order to not create traffic on the highway. So you want to create less traffic on the highway where it's more critical than on the side streets. But I'm an electrical engineer, not a traffic engineer. I'm sure we're having, I'm, I'm sure that there have been
You got shocked, baby.
There have been traffic studies that likely adjusted the traffic signals, but I will take it to DTS accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Guy. Captain Rabello? Charmaine, I'll get to you shortly. Captain Rabello? Can't hear you? Had your, had your hand up? We still can't hear you, sir. Okay, Charmaine? And then with the captain comes back, we'll try to get him again. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Um, could we, I, I thought I requested this last time, but you know, maybe not. Um, there was funding for the fire station in two thousand seventeen as well, and some of that money was expended. Could we find out, um, just a quick email on what that was expended for, um, for the very first time? Um, and we also have, um, a pending request, I think it's like twenty-twenty-one, um, or either DPP or DFM or DTS to go through our Aia Pearl City, um, community plan and let us know which projects are, were completed. I'm sure there's lots of them. It's just we've been waiting a couple of years now for that. And it's hard for us to figure out what we should still be asking for if a whole bunch of them are, you know, done or not good anymore. We're not really, but if you could help us, we'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
That was for CIP project?
It's a development plan for the Aia Pearl City area. And I can email it. It's also on the Neighborhood Commission website as a resolution requesting the city give us an update. So it's also on there.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on, Captain Rabello, one more time. Okay, don't hear anything. Uh, any other Board Members, any questions? Board Director Urbano? Hey, Community, any questions? Here, none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Right on.
Have a good evening.
All, all good, uh, feedback. Okay, moving on to, uh, Councilmember Val Okamoto. Uh, she's here, but a representative is here.
Aloha Chair, can you hear me?
I got you. Go ahead.
Mahalo. Aloha Chair, Members of the Board, Eric Kamonu with Councilmember Okamoto's office. Just a quick legislative update. Last week, we had committee and there were a few bills of note that passed, which will be on the agenda for full council next week, Wednesday, the first. In the Budget Committee, Resolution two forty passed first reading. It seeks to request the city administration to present to the city council budget recommendations that address long-term emergency preparedness no later than a hundred and fifty days prior to the end of each fiscal year. In the Housing and Health Committee, Bill forty-seven was reported out for third reading. The purpose of Bill forty-seven is to address curbside recycling, including the collection of manufactured compostable materials. Bill fifty-two was heard in the Committee on Zoning and will be placed on the full council agenda. Bill fifty-two seeks to provide a more effective deterrent and hefty penalty to develop, to developers that violate the monster home ordinance by supplying incorrect information or on plans or convert rooms for multifamily uses during or post-construction. Uh, mahalo to the Board for the earlier resolutions. And, uh, Councilmember Okamoto just wanted me to, um, mention that she is in support of, uh, the resolutions by the Board and your folks' priorities and will work, uh, with the designated departments to find the most equitable solutions for everyone. Um, additionally, myself, Councilmember, and her staff will be joining the Pearl Harbor Bike Cleanup this weekend on Saturday at seven AM. If anyone is interested in joining, please let me know. Uh, with that, I will be more than happy to take any questions or concerns.
Eric, thank you for having a very brief, uh, summary. Appreciate that. And, uh, I wanna, I wanna attend some of these, uh, hearings on some of these bills in the future, so keep me alerted, okay?
Fantastic.
Quick, are there any questions? For Eric? Hey? Seeing none, Community? Seeing none. Eric, thank you. Okay, moving on. Governors, Representative, Mr. Jeff Ekman, thank you.
Chair, um, thank you very much. I was on the schedule the last, uh, two months, but I was on Maui helping, uh, Maui County out. And, uh, that's a, a lot of the nexus of the notes that I have from the Governor. He has his newsletter out. I'll make sure I share it with the Chair, uh, so the link gets out. He's actually gonna be off island until the thirtieth, so Lieutenant Governor will be acting Governor. But his main efforts are assisting Maui, using state agencies, federal agencies, and trying to just- But his main efforts are assisting Maui, using state agencies, federal agencies, and trying to just keep to his word. I worked in a joint information center while on Maui, and the biggest thing we heard from the people were, um, what the governor said wasn't coming true. So he was really trying to get every single person that were in the hotels some kind of housing. And there was many different levels of people in the hotels, including homeless. And all of them is his goal to get into housing. And so he's still trying to meet that goal. It's a very important thing that he's doing there. And it's really hard to message. Now, I'm sure you could see it in the, in the news. Um, got that going on. And then I just wanted to give a real fast PFAS update. Um, our Waiva Armory for the Hawaii National Guard, we've been able to get rights to go into three different uh, people's properties to do testing. Uh, but we can't get permission to go into the rest. We're working through that process. There's about fifteen landowners that live in that Waiva Road section. And, you know, our first results came back, uh, way below testing levels, which is good, but bad, right? You know, there's still traces, but it was very low and not unhealthy. And we're just gonna assume that the rest are until we can get in there, but we really wanna get in and test. So that's kind of going on from the State of Hawaii DOD as far as that PFAS update in Waiva. Um, that's all I had at this time, Chair. There's any questions?
Hey, thank you. I'm glad you made time to come and visit with us for our meeting. And plus the PFAS updates are very important, you know, for that Waiva area. Uh, board members, any questions for Mr. Hickman? Go ahead, Dan.
I have stopped by a couple of times at the Kalahali near the, um, Department of Health, and it looks very organized and stuff. So I would encourage the governor to, uh, think about doing, um, more sooner. I know he's busy with Maui, but, uh, he's got, uh, staff like yourself and so forth. They could, um, get something started, uh, in, in, you know, our area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll note that.
Hey, board members, we have a hands up here, uh. Melody?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, I have a question regarding the PFAS. You said that there are testings that have been done at Waiva. Uh, is it the water that is being tested?
Yes, it's the water at the residence, at specific residents in the Waiva Village area. Um, I can send you the link. Uh, it has the report and the, the testing results from the first test that we did.
When you say testing results, uh, what results came about if, if, um, you have it with you?
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I have really smart people who work for me. Um, but I do know, uh, talking to the environmental specialists, that it's way below EPA standards, which that's, that's a statement now because EPA standards might change. But as of right now, there is no unsafe drinking water at the properties we tested.
Okay, because the DOH just increased its EAL, EALs almost a hundred percent as of April of two thousand twenty-three. And it is substantially higher than what the interim EALs are by the EPA. So for the EPA, it's point zero zero four parts per trillion. But for the DOH, it's, if it's for, uh, uh, PFOA, PFOA, then I believe it is at twelve parts per trillion, which is three thousand times more than what the EPA is saying is safe drinking water. So it is important that you can relay whether we are looking at EPA standards or are we looking at DOH standards? Because while the nation is tightening the EALs, Environmental Action Levels, Hawaii is not. They are relaxing it. And it could very well be because of Waiva. So that is our concern. I'm, you know, I'm with the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party, so I follow these kinds of things. And, uh, Waiva is one of those that we are definitely following because of the PFAS as a result of the, uh, military, right, military airlines, um, landing over there, or the airfield.
Yeah, our PFAS is from our Waiva Armory, where our fighter fighters used it and trained. And we are testing where we assumed the plume would go. Uh, but we're working directly with DOH. But I can check, um, with our DOH people as well. We've been hand in hand with them and Border Water Supply. So I can, I can check those for you and get back to you on that.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and Jeff, for next month, if you could give us a, a printout of those values. And Melody, you can email me. We'll make sure that you get, get those results. And then you guys can debate, uh, which standard is gonna be used.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
All right. All right, uh, board members, any, uh, or community, any other, uh, questions for Mr. Hickman? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on, Casey Abbe.
Good evening, Chair. Let me share my screen with you folks. Um, can you folks see your screen?
Yep, we got it good.
Okay, great.
I know that, I know that illegal U-turn very well.
Yeah, okay, okay, let me. Um, good evening, Chair Verre, members of the Pro City Neighborhood Board, uh, Casey Abbe from the State DOT Highway Division, responding to concerns about the U-turn movement being allowed by HDOT for only passenger cars at Halemohalo. Okay, this slide shows a picture of how we did a quick check to see if an unsignaled intersection like Halemohalo can accommodate U-turns for a single unit truck. Utilizing plans, um, with a scale which equals forty feet, we place a template of an eight and a half feet wide by thirty feet long single unit truck with six tires, four tires in the back on a, on a, on one axle. As our standard truck size to determine if we will allow trucks to make U-turns. I apologize, but the template is flipped on the plans to show a left turning movement for U-turn. The template is normally for a right turn, uh, movement. This slide shows the actual template of a single unit truck, which follows federal highways design guidelines. This is a slide of a close-up view of the single unit truck template that has a standard turning radius of forty-two feet. But technically, making a U-turn from a proper parallel starting position as shown on this template, the single unit truck needs a total of eighty-four feet to make a complete U-turn. Uh, we understand that small trucks like the Ford Maverick, mid-sized trucks like the Toyota Tacoma, and full-size trucks like the Ford F-150 are smaller than our single unit truck template. But by following the federal design guidelines, it helps minimize future litigations against the state highways if an accident occurs. This slide shows a close-up view of a six and a half foot wide by eighteen foot long passenger car with a turning radius of twenty-one feet, which is probably the size of a mid-sized car. This slide, uh, shows a close-up view of a seven feet wide by nineteen feet long passenger car with a turning radius of twenty-four feet, which is probably the size of a full-size car. So with the three twelve-foot lanes on Kamakamehari, most passenger vehicles with a turning radius of twenty-four feet or less, like the Toyota Prius you see here, which is considered a compact car, can make the U-turn since they are not starting from a parallel position. So they don't need the full forty feet to make a complete U-turn. Our single unit truck would probably need at least forty-two feet to make the partial U-turn, which is wider than the three twelve-foot lanes. As for the Ford Maverick, it might be able to make the U-turn. But I'm not sure if the Toyota Tacoma or the Ford F-150 could make the U-turn. But since our single unit truck cannot make the U-turn, we can only allow passenger cars due to potential litigation. As for when the new U-turn sign for passenger cars only being installed at Halemohalo, I will need to get back to you at the next meeting. Okay, last month, um, I had a question was asked if there were any written agreement between HDOT or HECO on prohibiting U-turns at the HECO entrance. There were no written agreement or any permit approved by HDOT. Our temporary took control of Kamakamehari for the design and construction of the new rail system. As I mentioned at last month's meeting, although our traffic branch reminded Hart to provide U-turns, Hart was also concerned about liability. So they decided not to decide to prohibit U-turns completely for all cars or vehicles. As also when Hart took control of Kamakamehari Highway, HECO's other median open, opening at Kulianna Street was permanently closed. Therefore, HECO must operate with one full access driveway and allow U-turns to add conflict at their consolidating intersection, which could, could lead to additional traffic delays in the westbound direction and increase potential crashes at the intersection. HDOT would not reopen the median Kulianna Street for U-turn movements or left turn movements because there is no exclusive left turn lane to prevent rear end collisions. And it will cause congestion if vehicles in the median lane must stop because cars in front of them are waiting to make a U-turn or left turn. If the board would like to request HDOT to reconsider allowing only passenger cars to make the U-turn at the HECO entrance like Halemohalo, I'll recommend the board obtain support from the AIA Neighborhood Board, your elected officials, and local businesses and write a letter to our HDOT director. Uh, to address any traffic delays or potential accidents at the HECO entrance, the board could ask HDOT to conduct a pilot project to see if allowing U-turns will cause major congestions or increase in accidents. Finally, during one of my field investigation, I noticed a van, unfortunately, it was a state van, making an illegal U-turn at the HECO entrance. As you can see here, um, the van could not make the partial U-turn within the three true lanes that is thirty-six feet wide. It had to intrude into the shoulder gutter and would probably hit the raised curbing and sidewalk if the raised curbing and sidewalk was there instead of the gutter. This is the next picture of completing the U-turn. So, um, we hope that the board will understand why we are installing passenger cars only sign to make the U-turns at Halemohalo. Uh, this concludes my report. I can take any questions now.
Casey, thank you. Thank you for the updates. Appreciate it. Questions?
Um, not so much a question, just two points. One of a correction. Um, no one on the board made a request about, um, the agreement with HECO. We were advised by, um, Mr. Abbe that there was an agreement in place with HECO. The board didn't bring that up. Mr. Abbe brought that up. On the second point about that state, it just so happens that the state transportation is there taking pictures when a state van is making an illegal U-turn. Um, it seems a little suspect first, um, but if you notice in that picture, that van is clearly taking that turn extremely wide. He's nowhere near the left-hand curb of that left, illegal left-hand turn, which I will remind Mr. Abbe is actually a state law. When making a left or right-hand turn, you must by law be at the extreme left or right of the lane, which that van was not. So to say that that van is the example that you cannot safely make that turn is a false statement.
And we don't know if that van was at the Green Apple Lounge just before that.
Well, he couldn't have been because the Green Apple Lounge is on the Makai side.
Brendan, great points. Casey, uh, appreciate it. Uh, like I said, we, uh, deferred our, uh, letter to Director Sniffin. Uh, Chair Wood and I will get together. We, we already have a, uh, a, uh, letter drafted. We've actually both signed it. Uh, we just wanna make sure that both our boards agree to move forward. But, uh, we have to do this. You know, to be able to drive one point two miles to go, go to Popeyes, you get your food and you gotta go back up to Newtown. You gotta drive two miles just to get your chicken. And that's a lot of wasted gas. So, uh, hopefully we'll get this resolved. Casey, thank you much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we have one more question. Charmaine?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I echo everything, uh, Board Member Lee said. And I think at this point, we're beyond, um, asking for support. Um, rail is supposed to be adding to the way we move around and to our transportation. And by denying all these U-turns, it's not really adding to the community. It's actually making it harder. And I think this board has talked about U-turns in this area for three years. And we've actually had even people from the community come and ask for U-turns because their businesses were suffering. So it's not just us. It's actually coming from outside. And now that rail's going, I think we have to make sure that rail and the construction, all that is, um, in balance with our community.
Hey, thank you, Charmaine. Any other questions from community? Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, Senator Glenn Wakai, are you online, sir? Your representative? Okay, hearing none. Okay, moving on to our Senator Brendan Elafante. Welcome.
Hello. Great evening, Chair Verre, Vice Chair Duran, members of the Pro City Board, and members of the community. Uh, Brandon Elafante from the State Senate. You do have my written report. That's the same fall report that we've been having. We'll generate a new report next month for our winter report for November and December. Uh, Michael Greeno from my staff will put the link in, in the chat for those online. Just a few follow-ups from some of the board members from last month, uh, starting off with Board Member Wong Jr. Um, this is regarding your question about having large vehicles, um, over ten thousand pounds. I believe we sent you this response, but for the public to be aware, uh, we received this response from HDOT. Uh, and I'm, and I quote, uh, "We do not recommend allowing large overweight vehicles to use a zipper lane. The zipper lane is a limited access high occupancy vehicle lane intended to provide travel time benefits to drivers willing to carpool or use alternative modes of transportation. HOV lanes are designed to optimize the efficiency of the state's highway system by transporting more individuals using fewer vehicles. They also contribute to reduction in pollution and fuel consumption by encouraging behaviors like carpooling and the adoption of electric vehicles," end quote. That's from HDOT directly. There was also, um, some other requests that you did have, Board Member Wong. Uh, just so you know, um, I wrote directly to Director Sniffin and Deputy Director Shishido, who's the Highway Director. Actually wrote to them three times, uh, regarding your request as well as, uh, Board Member Lee, and I have yet to receive a response from HDOT. This is not Mr. Abbe's fault whatsoever. I went straight, strictly to the top. Um, and we have not received the response regarding, um, having a portal more west where the current portal is for the zipper lane. And then I believe the other, uh, con- concern that you brought up, Board Member Wong, was if that merge from the shoulder to the right lane could be during weekends as well, which also sort of is a little different than Board Member Lee, who asked to look at the safety from that merge. For those of you who might be aware, if you're traveling from Waipahu and you exit Waimalu, there's that AM shoulder lane that operates that conflicts with that right lane when people exit. So we've asked HDOT to give us, um, an update on safety improvements on that. And as soon as I receive a response, I'll be sure to share it with, uh, Chair Verre and the board. And hopefully by next month's meeting, we'll have a formal response for that. A couple of highlights I wanna mention. Many of you probably got the invitation, um, the late Senator Harimoto, who represented this area, used to be the executive director here, um, used to represent Pearl City and AIA and Halaava Heights in the State Senate. Uh, we're having a formal dedication. Um, thanks to my colleagues, Senator Kino and Rep Chan, and as well as Councilman Okamoto, who represent the Manana area. Uh, I've been asked by the family to help them plan that event. So that's gonna be on Friday, November tenth. That's a observed state holiday for Veterans Day at the Breen Harimoto Manana Community Park. Um, thanks to Pearl City Foundation, uh, and the board, they donated a nice wooden sign there that you see on the corner. So the public's invited again. That's Friday, November tenth at nine thirty AM. And then one last announcement is coming up. We will be going into special session for two Supreme Court nominees. Um, and so you probably heard in the news that will be in November to confirm, uh, Mr. Blevins as well as, uh, the Chief Judge on the ICA. Um, Lisa Gonozza, uh, coming up for confirmation before the Senate. That concludes my report and happy to take any questions and happy Halloween to all of you.
All right, Senator, thank you so much for all the updates and, uh, you can count me in to be there for, uh, the Manana Park, uh, event. Board members, any questions for our Senator? Seeing none, virtual. Community, any questions? Yes, go ahead. Okay, we're good. All right, that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And, uh, we're welcome, Senator Henry Aquino. Welcome.
Aloha, Chair, uh, board members, uh, good evening. Uh, last few months, uh, uh, Ways and Means Committee, uh, had uh, conducted a few site visits, both on Oahu as well as the neighbor islands, to check out progress on statewide policies that we have passed over the last few years. Um, our last visit will be, um, next month, and we will be Our last visit will be next month, and we will be on the big island. Okay, and also, as mentioned by Chair, stakeholders, a meeting that was conducted a few weeks ago to discuss recent long-term ideas for Sunset Memorial Park, specifically Senator Wakai's proposal. And I believe we do have a scheduled meeting and probably a series of meetings in the future. So that concludes my report. I'd like to entertain any questions.
Yes, Senator, thank you for those updates. And also, we appreciate your involvement with Sunset Memorial Park. The more leadership involved, the more ideas we go forward to try to find that long-term solution. Board members, any questions? None online, sir? Community, any questions? Seeing none? We're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay, moving on to Representative Greg Takayama. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Hi, just following up on Senator Aquino's report. This is primetime, even though legislature is not in session, primetime for House and as well as Senate committees to do site visits. And as a matter of fact, just last week, the House Committee on Water and Land, and of which I'm a member, visited facilities at the top of Waimea Home, less than a mile from here, that are funded by the state, which provide, number one, and people don't know much about it, but they are the lead agencies that fight our invasive species, plant invasive species, and are doing active work in the Ko'olau Mountains to combat the pervasiveness of strawberry guava and other species. And another agency that is doing active work is to fight the near extinction of our land snails. And they are actively going out and finding land snail colonies throughout the Ko'olau and Wainai Mountains and doing their best to preserve them with the help of University of Hawaii researchers. Finally, one more site visit that occurred earlier this month was the Women's Prison in Kailua. And even though it doesn't directly affect us in Pro City, it does affect us in the sense that in a year from now, under legislative funding, we will have completed a new dormitory at the Women's Prison in Kailua that will house the 100 women that are now housed at O triple C, move them all, consolidate all the women in carceries at the Kailua facility. And that'll not only be a better environment for the women, detainees, as well as prisoners, it also relieve overcrowding at O triple C to some extent by at least 100 women. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, Representative Takayama, thanks for the updates. And Board members, any questions? Seeing none? Community? All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to Representative Cory Chun. Welcome. Hope you had a good trip.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Board members. Cory Chun, House Issue 35. My colleagues, it's hard for me to go last because they kind of hit all the hot spot and the highlights, but I just wanted to share because I know transportation issues was kind of the highlight of this meeting and apologize for being late. There's actually a power outage in parts of Waipahu still out since 5 o'clock this evening that hopefully can come back sometime tonight. But my office is also working on, and I didn't report this last month, but we've been working on the intersection with Lehuwa Avenue and Commitment Highway. So, you know, it's a very dangerous turn right when people are coming eastbound and turning onto Lehuwa Avenue. My office, we tried to work with Cutter to rearrange their cars to increase the sightlines because if you're standing at that crosswalk to the island, you're not able to see oncoming cars. You basically have to walk around the corner. And so that's a real concern for the residents in the Lehuwa area because, you know, if you're trying to get to the bus stop, it's really dangerous with the cars coming around. So that's something we're trying to figure out, trying to figure out with hopefully some creative solutions. But you could probably add that to the list of things that need to be worked on. But with that, I'll stand on my report and I'll take any questions.
Okay, Representative Chun, thank you. And I echo what you said. It's a very dangerous intersection. You know, there's days I just want to just sit out there and just keep track of how many people don't mind, they're not mindful with the crosswalk signals, especially the mentally ill for the homeless. I just see a bicycle just go across the intersection, and it's amazing they didn't get hit. But it's noted. Board members, any questions for Representative Chun? Seeing none? Community? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Representative Tris Lachika, are you online?
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, members. Can you hear me okay? Okay, apologies. I couldn't join you last month. I'm glad you got to meet Erin from my office. I had the pleasure of joining Representative Takayama on that Waimea Home Road site visit and got to hike a little bit with him in the committee. We're also doing a bunch of site visits for the Education and Higher Education Committee. But what's been taking up our time over the last couple of weeks is our participation in the interim, House interim working group. So I sit on the schools working group for the reopening of schools in Lahaina and getting the displaced students and staff back to school. We just finished our first draft today, so we've been busy writing. And then for my jobs in Business Working Group, we are going to fly over to Lahaina on Thursday to meet directly with the affected businesses and employees to get their perspective and incorporate that into our report. Once the reports are finalized by HM SO, they will be made available to the public, upon which we will have public hearings on them. And we can share that information with you once it's out. Thank you so much for all your work on the Pearl City High School, you know, restoration of bus service. I believe there was some follow-up questions from last month. So we've been, we had asked the Department of Education to provide us with an update on GOV's emergency proclamation on the suspension of the CDLS licensure. And so they're still working to, well, it's helped them particularly with kind of moving some resources around on Maui. They're still working here on Oahu. And out of the 17 routes that were canceled on the island of Kauai, they restored nine. Out of the 61, so 61 routes on Oahu that were canceled, they only restored one, and that one is Ko'or Ridge. So thank you so much for everyone who did help to advocate for that. I did share the route on the list of stops with Chair Veray over email. So Chair, if you can share that with members, that would be great. But obviously, there's so much more that needs to be done. I mean, just having 60 routes still, you know, canceled is still unacceptable. And then finally, we are in response to that, we have drafted legislation on school bus access. We just want to ensure that what happened this school year doesn't happen again. So it's really establishing comprehensive standards for the Department of Education so that when they do make decisions, they are doing it in the best way possible and ensuring that, you know, reasonable accommodation as well as equity and distance to the schools are considered before they make these decisions. So once that bill is finalized, we'll share that draft with you. And then hopefully, come next year, you can help support that bill. But that's it for me. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Representative Lachika, thank you for all the updates. Great to have you back with us. And we'll be in contact with you as well as the other legislators as we get into the next session because we're ready to provide testimony on those key bills. Okay, any questions for our representative? Seeing none? Community? All right, well, thank you. Okay, moving to congressional officials. We've got Mr. Nestor Garcia. Nestor, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Veray, members of the board, if you can hear me. I want to go over our fourth quarter Neighborhood Board report from the Congressman. He wants to, first of all, especially since this chair has taken an interest in this particular issue, on commercial helicopters and small aircraft. The FAA had proposed some new rules that would take effect next spring. Congressman Case took a look at those proposed rules. He had serious reservations about the rules, each one of them. For example, the minimum 1,500 feet above ground, which he doesn't think is a good idea for that particular minimum. He's still concerned about the frequency of operations of these type of aircraft and the routes of these type of aircraft, which fly over homes and impact our communities. So he let the FAA know what he thought about these proposed rules, and we'll see what happens when his comments and the others that commented. The deadline to comment was on October 6. He continues to work with the rest of the congressional delegation to see that the victims of the Maui wildfires get the needed relief that they need, not just now, but probably for years to come. He wants to remind members, well, members of the community, I should say, about his congressional app challenge. The deadline is coming up really soon. The deadline is November 1 for students in high school and middle school to submit apps for this congressional contest, as is every year. So you can enter as an individual or as a team of four members. Two of the members have to go to middle or high school in this congressional district. The deadline again is November 1, yeah. And then he wants to make sure that constituents understand that a lot of, what a member of Congress does is take care of individual concerns of his constituents. For example, I take care of people who have a problem with the Office of Personnel Management, especially retirees. And there was a woman that came to our office. And she came in with a walker. She's a veteran. She has a problem with the way the OPM calculated her retirement benefit, yeah. I also take care of veterans. There's a big portfolio with veterans and their concerns and the way they are treated, their benefits, and the way they're cared for, yeah. On that end, Chairman and members, I want to announce that you're the first board to hear about this. There will be a town hall, or what Congressman likes to refer to as a talk story. This is focused on veterans. This will happen on Saturday, November 4 at the Harriet and Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Memorial Hall at Kehe Lagoon. Again, that's Saturday, November 4, starting at 9 o'clock in the morning. We'll run until 10:30. Now, the problem, if you have been following current events in Congress, is that we may have to make this a virtual appearance by the Congressman since we're not quite sure what is happening with the leadership issue in Congress. And he may have to stay in Washington, DC until this matter is settled. So that's still going to be held with or without his personal appearance there. And there are talk stories also coming in January. Right after New Year's Day, we're launching right into a series of in-person talk stories, town halls, if you will. Chairman, you may remember that we had one in April at Pro City. So these town halls are going to be held at Moanalua, at Milani Mauka, at Downtown, well, not Downtown, I should say. It's Washington Middle School, at Haione Elementary School in East Honolulu, and one on Saturday morning will be held at Coopley High School. Details of those five town halls, talk stories, will come in letters that will be mailed to constituents in the district. With that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Nestor, thank you for the quick updates. A lot of numbered things, the helicopter issue. I have seen improvement as far as the commercial helicopters not flying that often over Waialu area of Pearl City. You know, I'm not sure off of Pacific Palisades because we used to have reports of them actually landing up there, dropping and off people and picking them up. But I haven't gotten any complaints. But other than that, I will hit one of those town hall meetings. Just keep us advised when they are. I'll get the word out to the board. Board members, any questions for Nestor? Hearing none? Oh, wait, we got one. We've got Melody. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. Aloha, aloha, Nestor. Can you, can you please ask the Congressman that we really need to have an EPA certified lab on island? House Bill 2515 passed into law. However, when it went through Ways and Means, there was a provision that was added which said that federal funding has to be first secured before we were to get this lab. And right now, we're seeing that there are people that are suffering from Red Hill, from the contamination, as well as we're thinking maybe even Waialu since Waialu is now the sole source for the Navy line. And so we are unable to get a more accurate read as to the level of contamination other than the rapid test, which is really inaccurate. So sending the samples to the continent has a turnaround time of maybe a week to a month. So if you could just bend the senators, Congressman's ear, that we really need to have on island an EPA certified lab so we can have real-time testing to determine whether or not we do have safe drinking water for the community. Thank you.
Okay, I'll follow up on that legislation that you referred to, Melody.
All right, Mahalo. Mahalo, Chair.
All right, well, thank you, Melody. That was a good seed to plant with this board as well because I think it's a great idea. So Nestor, take it easy. Give our regards to, oh, wait, we got one more? Okay. Who's that from?
That was Captain Robello.
Take it with. Yeah, just so everybody knows.
So Captain Blaze Robello was saying in the chat that his mic is broken, and this is not the right place for DOH to do this, so inappropriate. That was his comment.
Okay, all right, Nestor, thank you very much and we hope to see you next meeting. All right, moving on to our state federal government agencies. The Board of Water Supply, Mr. Arlen Ledward, are you there?
Thank you, Trevor Ray. Members of the board.
All right, Arlen, you got it.
Two water main breaks to report for September. September 22, there was an eight-inch water main break near 1290 Ho'ohiki Place. On September 27, there was an eight-inch water main break near 1538 Nana Kai Street. Each year, the Board of Water Supply and its agency partners participate in Imagine a Day Without Water. This is a national day of action to unite communities and policymakers to advance greater and more equitable investment in water systems. This past Saturday, October 21, a community event was held at the Wahiwah Freshwater State Recreational Park. There were about 20 booths with hands-on activities to learn about the importance of one water and the impacts of climate change today and in the future. There were also rain barrel and native seed workshops, craft activities for drought-tolerant plants, art created from coastal debris, genki ball making, freshwater fishing activities, ono food, fun games, and prizes. And with that, I will move on to, I received some questions from the Board Chair regarding Board of Water Supply Pearl City Water System Improvements, Part IV Project. The Board of Water Supply systematically programs proactive replacement of water main pipes before they fail. With improved methods and materials replacing water lines prior to failure will help reduce the number of breaks and ultimately help the BWS fulfill its mission to provide the people and ultimately help the BWS fulfill its mission to provide the people of Oahu with safe, dependable and affordable water. While the Board of Water Supply makes every effort to complete the necessary work as possi- as quickly as possible and minimize disruptions to the public, system integrity and job site safety are of utmost importance. As much as possible, every effort is made to prevent unnecessary or extended interruptions to your water service, safeguard the existing water system and appurtenances, and minimize inconvenience to the public. So the Board of Water Supply Pearl City Water System Improvements Part Four Project will install approximately one thousand twenty feet of twelve-inch water mains and nineteen thousand four hundred fifty feet of four-six-and-eight-inch water mains. The water mains were originally installed in the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies. Uh, the pri- prioritization of the project is due to the high frequency of main breaks in this area. Uh, the project is anticipated to be completed by September twenty-twenty-four or possibly sooner, barring any unforeseen circumstances. Final paving for parts of Koahaka Street and Cave Loca Street will be conducted next month. And that's the end of my report. Trevor.
Thank you, uh, you know, just for the board here. I've got a number of phone calls and emails uh right out here, Bo Moana Street. Uh, there's a lot of steel plates that are out there. People start to lose their tires. Uh, it's all the way down, up and down the street here, and they were just concerned, how long is the construction gonna go on for and when is it gonna be completed? But anyway, thank you, Arlen, for the update. Uh, board members, any questions? Unity, here are none. Thank you. Okay, one question, go ahead.
Hello, Chair, thank you. Yes, thank you very much, Chair. Uh, Arlen, I'm just wondering, yesterday, the Board of Water Supply had its uh meeting regarding the uh increases in the water rates fifty percent in the next five years. My question to you is whether, not actually whether, because part of it is a result of Red Hill and the spills and and what Board of Water Supply has to do with the building more infrastructure as well as monitoring wells and and other wells in order to uh satisfy, I guess, the amount of water that was going to the customers that have now been closed off because of Red Hill and shutting off those wells and shafts. So do you know what percentage of the fifty percent increase would be attributable to Red Hill spills? And of course, the reason I'm asking that is because the community believes that that cost should be borne by the Department of Defense versus the community. Right? Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I don't have uh a breakdown as far as Red Hill projects for that fifty percent increase, but I do believe the fifty percent increase is over the next ten years. So uh for most, for most single-family residents, I believe it's six percent each year for the next ten years.
Okay, well, whatever the
I can follow up. Yes, I can follow up with you and try to get an answer for you for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Arlen. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Arlen, thank you much. We're gonna move on, and we'll see you next meeting. Thanks for digging up that information. Uh, Pearl City Library, Vicky, are you online?
Yes. Uh, good evening, everybody, members of the board. Uh, so I'll mention first, the closures will be closed on November ten. Um, that's a Friday until November twelve, Sunday, and observance of Veterans Day. We're also gonna be closed on November twenty-third, Thursday, for Thanksgiving. Uh, we are open on Black Friday, though. Um, I know people are curious about our renovation. Um, I do know it's it's not complete. Um, we do have a copy of the environmental impact statement report at the library, if anyone is interested in reviewing it. I can tell you that there are not plans to include a pre-K building as part of the executive office and early learning program in addition to the Community Learning Center. So um if you ever see the the current plan, it looks a little much bigger than it was originally meant meant to be. Uh, for programs, we do have a new children's librarian. Her name is Taryn Nakko. She's been offering a six-week baby storytime program. It's called Baby Rhyme Time. Um, our last one is gonna be on November first at nine fifteen AM, and she's gonna bring it back again early next year and once we determine those dates, but it's an extremely popular program. Um, our last one had well over eighty people attending it, and they're also coming from all over the island. She's also got a really strong following for our Kiki Storytime on Thursdays at nine fifteen, which is followed by a craft. Um, we do have an all ages craft called Kabachon Keychains, which is gonna be on November fifth at one PM, and then again on November eighth at two thirty. It's a one-hour program on each day, but uh registration is required, so come to the library for that. We have invited on November nineteen, um, a local author, Karen Gibbs. She's gonna be doing a parenting workshop called Break the Cycle of Anxious Parenting. That's at eleven AM. She's a life coach, a special ed teacher, um, and a local author. So we have other programs coming up in November, and if you're interested in finding out more about these, you can pick up a calendar at the library, or you can check out our website, librarieshawaii.org. Uh, that completes my report.
All right, Vicky, thank you much. Board members, any questions for Vicky? Okay, see you none, community. See you none. Thank you, Vicky. Happy Halloween to the library.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Joint Base Pearl Harbor, Mr. Victor Flynn and Mr. Uh, Dave Duna Hodge.
Hey, good evening, Chair, uh, members of the community board. Uh, thanks very much for the opportunity. Uh, not a lot to really update except for some numbers. Yes, we're gonna go through some numbers. Uh, the defueling started last Monday on October the sixteenth, and as of close of business today, we were twenty-six percent down in the uh the Red Hill tanks. In fact, we're talking about twenty-seven point six million. We're sitting on the Empire State right now in Pearl Harbor, so we've been doing some some great work. Joint Task Force Red Hill has been doing some. Uh, Friday press conference, uh followed by, wow, I'm sorry, let me, I'm getting ahead of myself. Had a blessing ceremony with Kahului Cordell and some other folks last week, and then a press conference over the weekend. And then this Friday begins a weekly press conferences for as long as they're interesting to anybody, uh, on weekly updates. Uh, we've changed the long-term monitoring updates on our websites. In fact, we're going to daily updates locally, and then you'll see the differences on the web. But that's, you have to get the Red Hill app on your phone. If I just did it. I've been telling you guys to do it for three months. I just did it. It took ten minutes, and you can see the volume. You can see all the points, and it links back to all the safe water websites for all the information. And it's not, it's not just for you. It's for the kids. It's for your families, for everybody back home. Uh, there are nine lifts, so the Empire State is the ship that's in there now. There's another one beside her. There are seven more lifts after that. This thing is going on through mid-January, and uh with with blessings, we'll get through this thing safely, and all that fuel will be gone. Uh, the next long-term monitoring booths, this is an important uh information. We try to do one on base for the base personnel, and we try to do one off base. Uh, the one on base is October twenty-sixth, this Thursday, uh at the Hickam Army Air Force Exchange Mall, and then on Wednesday, November the eighth, it'll be again out at Capalina Night Market, out at Capalina Homes, out there at the Beach Gardens. And I believe that's all I've got. Turn it over, Mike. Answer.
Thank you for that handsome bit, Victor Flint, Naval Facilities. Um, October twenty-fifth, the Navy's receiving students from the the Okini Elementary School from Nagaoka, Japan. Nagaoka is our Honolulu sister city. Uh, Navy volunteers are being being rounded up to clean up the Pearl Harbor Bike Path. That'll be on October twenty-eighth. Uh, if you're interested in helping, there's Duna right there. Get on the list. Navy's annual Makahiki, November eighteenth. Um, the Navy is partnering with uh Oahu Council of Hawaiian Civic Clubs and the Native Hawaiian Societies for the bike path cleanup. Everybody's going to Pa at the A Frame at Rainbow Marina, and uh it's free and open to the public. And last is uh on October twenty-sixth, that's this Thursday at three-thirty, the Navy will be hosting a group to visit the Arizona Memorial. There's plenty of open seats. If you would like to come on board, ask Duna, and let's go for a boat ride. That's all I have. Are there any questions for myself or Duna?
All right, gentlemen, thanks for the quick updates, some good fun activities, and importantly, with the with the defueling that's going on, everybody's really happy with that. Board members, any questions? Anything virtual? We got a hand up? Melody?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you very much. Aloha, aloha, Victor. Okay, uh, twenty-six million is on the Empire State. Where is it going?
Some will go to, some will go to the the new tanks at a Campbell. Some is going to the Philippines, Singapore, and DoD reserves overseas, and also back to San Diego to the DoD tanks uh for use for the DoD.
Okay, but this one specifically, is it going off island or will it go to Campbell?
I I I don't know, but it's going to those five locations, Mel. I don't know exactly where the Empire State is going, but so some some goes to Campbell, and then some goes to the Philippines, some to San Diego, and some to Singapore.
Okay, 'cause twenty-six million.
No, twenty-seven point six million, yeah.
Okay.
But she's not full yet. She's not full yet.
Oh, what would be full capacity?
I I don't know. I I'll have to get back to you on that. I know there are nine lifts, so I'm thinking, I'm counting uh about a hundred million, a hundred and four million divided by nine. So that's what we're, that's what we're estimating. So I'm not sure.
Okay.
There there are two ships there now, right now. There are two ships side by side, and they're pumping in the boat as fast as they can.
Okay, that's, oh, okay, that's great. Um, we've we've also, however, heard that there was a leak or it's it's being described to us as a weepage, a weepage of one gallon of petroleum, which I don't know what the word weepage is, but that's how it was uh described.
I'll have to get back to you. Yeah, we've not heard that on the public affairs side from the Red Hill folks, so we we've not heard that.
Okay, uh, and then, and then I don't know if you've seen any of the press release lately. There has been some illnesses that have been born by the community, mostly those that are on the Navy line. We've got some rashes, babies having rashes, and some bodies having rashes.
A joint base commander went out as soon as we found out, you know, the afternoon from the CRI. You talking about the the calls in from the CRI? The membership of the the community, yes.
I I am one of the members. I am a member of the CRI.
Okay.
Also known as Cry. Okay.
Oh, now I get it. Yeah, Cry, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, so uh the Joint Base Commander and Joint Base Leadership went to each one of the homes that wanted us to, four of the five. We visited, we offered water, and we did the spectrum analy- the the spectrum analyzer there on site uh to check the water and then took samples. And then, so we're waiting for the samples to come back from the mainland, but each one of the samples there locally showed no sheen, showed no water, and negative for the petrol, I guess, what whatever the the correct word is. I'm I'm using the wrong words. Uh, but the the four families, four of the five families we spoke with, the fifth family turned us down. So that's where we're at right now. So the Joint Base Commander wrote a letter to all the residents to say that the the families have been taken care of, and then if anybody has any questions, uh, to call the EOC's emergency line, which is manned twenty-four-seven, and then also for health concerns to go over to the Navy Regional Medical Clinic. Uh, there's a one-eight-hundred number that we published. I can make sure you've got those numbers.
Okay.
Are those the incidents you're talking about?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, they've been addressed. Yes, ma'am.
Melody, we're gonna have to get moving on, and I ask if you could, I know you have a lot of questions, refocus that to the the Joint Task Force. They'll have their experts there. It wins the next race.
I will, okay. Will do.
Yeah.
I'll get you some good answers for the other stuff, too.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Appreciate. Thank you, guys.
Any questions, uh, anybody else? See, uh, we got one more. No, no, lay your hand down. You got me confused.
Sorry, sorry.
All right, gentlemen, thank you much, and we'll stay in touch. All right, and uh our last uh speaker here, and Chancellor, welcome back. We've missed you. Last few meetings. I know you've been uh on road trips.
It's been a little bit busy this semester, but uh
Well, welcome.
Chair, members of the board and community. I'm gonna be very brief because I'm at the tail end of the meeting. Um, I think you all know the great stuff that our faculty and staff do here at Leeward. Um, I will say that we are very grateful to have been voted Hawaii's best community college this year, and we strive for that kind of uh opportunity. Um, there are a couple of upcoming things that I'd really like to share. Number one, Discovery Fair was back last year. It's back this year again. It will happen November fourth. It's a great opportunity to expose the Kiki to what higher ed has to offer in a lot of what we do. It's a great community event. There's gonna be food, activities, fun all day. I'm tying that to a couple of things. Um, so again, Discovery Fair, um, followed by on the very same day, we have an upcoming performance um at our theater that evening. Uh, please consider coming. It's one of our faculty uh uh opportunities to showcase their work um on modern dance. But I'm also sharing, for those of you here in person, um, a list of performances that are upcoming that includes a Robert Casemiro Christmas, um, Ingenuity Tao Dance Theater, uh, Reimagining the Homeland, and our fiftieth anniversary for the theater, not Leeward, but for the theater, being celebrated May nineteenth, uh, this coming May nineteen. Um, and so all of these performances are really out here to bring the arts to our local community. Um, and like I've shared in previous meetings, uh, this year we opened our Ho'ohikea Kea Art Gallery. It's free admissions. Um, you know, you could come in the rail, make it a really nice outing with your family. It's a great way of showing the art that is being displayed at other art galleries nationally, and we have them right here in our Pearl City campus. Um, this October twenty-eighth, we're actually uh opening our third exhibit for the year, which is Ghost of War. Uh, please consider coming again. We even open on the weekends as an asset to our community. And so with that, I wanna thank you again for giving us a chance and um for coming to our events.
All right, Chancellor, thank you for the updates and enthusiasm and all the good fun events that are going on in our college. Uh, I just wanna let you know that uh I am trying to uh uh make contact with the with the the CEO of Roberts Hawaii to see if I could convince them it's in their best interest if they can loan you a bus for a period of time so we could get those CDL licenses.
I I I I don't wanna overpromise and underdeliver, but we have irons in the fire right now um in trying to secure the bus and also getting that federal federal approval for us to offer the S-class CDL. So lots in the work right now, and I I'm hoping to report at the next board meeting.
Okay, I'll back off right now. Let you guys continue on. All right, board members, any questions? Hey, see you done. Go ahead.
If we can uh lobby with anybody um constructively, let uh let uh let us know. Thank you.
I will. There are a couple of limitations. I will say getting instructors is a little bit hard. The bus is something that we have irons in the fire for, and so we should be able to deliver relatively soon. I'll keep updating the the neighborhood.
Great, great idea and uh good Band-Aid picks. Okay, all right, sir, that's all we got. Thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, Tony, you got any updates for BTS A?
Uh, just the football game this weekend. Um, Pearl City's playing Kaimuki on Saturday at six-thirty for the uh P-two boy semifinals. So that's the only update I have.
Okay, anything for the Pearl City Community Association?
Uh, just the Halloween bash on October thirty-one at Momilani Rec from five-thirty to eight o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have no treasures report. Uh, we we made that slight typo there. We spelled dock right in the minutes. Can I get a motion uh to approve the minutes for September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Wait a second. Okay, uh, uh, any other discussions? If not, uh, if there are no objections, the minutes are approved. Okay, announcements, Pearl Harbor Bike Path cleanup this weekend, October twenty-eighth. If you got nothing going on, please join in. The NCO Conference of the Chairs Meeting is gonna be virtual. Charmaine and I will be attending that. Sunset Memorial Park Cemetery Cleanup is being planned for November fourth. Uh, we're lucky to have Honolulu Fire Department recruits. They're gonna be helping with that. It's a very special cleanup. Uh, the Pearl Har- Pearl City Neighborhood Board Special Town Meeting in November sixteenth. And the next Pearl City Neighborhood Board Twenty-One will host a hybrid virtual in-person facilitated WebEx meeting uh, you know, in um in November, uh, November twenty-eighth, and they'll be on Focus forty-nine, uh, Ole. in November, uh, November twenty-eighth, and I'll be on Focus Forty-Nine Olelo. Uh, if anybody have anything, any other announcements? Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.